They gotta get this easement even though it's a can be permanent. In Texas, if you use, if you use an easement for like fifteen years and then this guy wants to develop this fence line and all that, you have to give him access. It's like a common law marriage or something like that. So that's why they all come out to the road anyway because any time using it, it's gonna become retractable. Irreversible, there's the terms. Just so happened that NPR show talking about the real estate market shortage of single family homes. So these ADUs are we, any talk of bringing those to the mother law suites that you can lift over a house and drop with a crane and they're all self-contained, just plug them in. I had to go back to the state. Another state started doing tiny home, but I've read that, but it's still going to the legislation at the time. I didn't follow up as to how it finished.
I thought I'd gotten pretty good at finding the Zoom meeting, but
Yeah, we switched it up.
Of course you did, because yeah, I'm on the rezone special use and variance request page. Oh, look at that, boy, if I just read down to the bottom of the thing, I'd find lots of stuff. That's actually way better. Yep. I'm a big fan of anything that makes it more transparent for the public to be able to participate.
Those people remember scroll down.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the problem with dealing with visionaries is that we're, we tend to cut to the bottom line real fast. We have no attention span, so we get somewhere and now we go pow, what's next, right?
I mean, we used to design webpages so that they fit a screen, you know? We didn't let people touch the scroll buttons and then all that, but there was a whole strategy as to how many links you can have on a page and all that stuff before you get people lost in the, in the lap width of your website. Nowadays. And so my wife keeps her iPad large font or something, you know, reading glasses. And so she's on a shopping thing and she says, there's no checkout button. And because it's way down there because of the font size and all the scrolling that takes you down to it. So saves me a couple of bucks every now and then, but then it also makes more computer use for me because I have to, if she thinks she can email me her shopping cart and then I can finish it up, I'm going, I got an empty shopping cart here.
Would you let me in? Thank you. Well, it's okay. I don't think I've missed anything. Hey, hey, hey.
Not too bad. I guess I didn't. We're gonna go. And I had been a couple, two weeks, but yeah, yeah, we last week, one day last week. She always wants to go. She's there to tell her every time she get out of church, she's gonna, it's gonna make you back. All right. See, she's not tearing up nearly as much. She's working her butt off in the, in the garden.
It's working because I could
She's actually realizing her back is not riding and stuff. We're back to the new normal, as they say.
Yes.
Two different medicines for that. She's pretty certain that she won't get it.
Yeah. Yeah. For now.
I don't know. This hopefully this first time in twenty five years, she doesn't have a horse, so yeah, I don't know how long it'll last, but we're, we're cleaning up the Hilltop Bar because we got it empty now. Making that a big project. Because I have to go up at midnight every night to lock all the doors to try to keep the bats out slowly, but surely they're yeah. Walked up to the bus this morning, there was two of them buzzing around the bar. Where's the door? Texans were just going down to a smaller quarter. Basically gave them an offer. They, they were looking for ways to cut their overhead. I said, well, if you use less than the farm, I won't charge you for anything more than what you use. And it was always, it was a sweetheart deal anyway, but it's just the mortgage and the tax. You have to carry insurance, so. So now they're using a smaller footprint. Charge them for the taxes of that.
Yeah.
A portion of the
Truck's a good idea.
Maybe it's interesting to be this really what I'm charging.
Kevin, you want to spot your traders either?
Yeah. The younger kids in the hundred jumper types.
That was Brad, huh?
No, now you're thinking of the half or
Sorry.
I'd like to hundred jumper anything. Really wasn't intended for that.
Yeah.
And so they're, they're Sash arena sized. They've always been complaining that they don't have enough room. I said, you know, I didn't build a hundred jumper if they came later. And so they're behind the very far there, they got thirty five acres there, they have two, two red dirt arenas that are four hundred jumper sized, so it suits their, but they, they, they don't have any facilities, you know, other than two rigs. They have a little back to back. I think it's maybe eight. I think it's got eight to a side, so sixteen installed back to back shed type.
Right.
And then they're just doing another one of those. Some of them live out in pastures because they got thirty five acres, so they already have more grazing than I was able to allow them. Anyway. I mean, originally, I thought of our farm as more the, the senior or the serious to Sash or, or kind of quiet.
Yes.
Not a bunch of kids running everywhere. That dream fell apart when the hundred jumpers has left the hole nine point. They went to place down in Mass and that way they bounced back and everybody gave you off. Pretty much twice. I said, okay, we'll see, but you know, they move the graze, the pastures, it's, it's pretty rough for them in the roads, not.
Yeah. That sounds like you're kind of getting strict about.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's better to start now than three or four years from now, so some ways it plays to our advantages because things presented, I need to shake the dirt so it doesn't run off. So that my house is not threatened by the farm.
Right.
So park the bus on Friday and use the work before I run out of steam alone.
Right, that's, that's
At first I thought you were out walking one of the dogs or something. Now your truck went wandering. We're in all proud. Yes. Thirty miles. My first job in college.
Yeah.
So, oh shit, that's
Yeah.
Yes, and I do all the take care of myself, but I can't have I started strong since I was twelve, six, like three hundred. Yeah, we just had it all, they just made it to Yeah. It's all maybe at least that size, because they were the So I was big in I said, I'm gonna be, she got the front Yeah. There's a big herd, there's visitor city all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah. We go in there, we go back to the home. Four, one, keep the house in back. Three, you put the house four, four, three.
Folks, as it is seven o'clock, I'll call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order, and yes, the house clock is still slow. Good evening and welcome to the May sixteen, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the O'Conie County Planning Commission. We are a recommending body to the O'Conie County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made tonight on rezoning requests and other issues will be forwarded to the O'Conie Board of Commissioners or appropriate city council for final action. Tonight's agenda and sign in sheets for people wishing to speak are available outside the commission chambers. This is the procedure we follow. The O'Conie County Planning Department staff presents their report and recommendations on each request. Public input is received from the petitioner or petitioner's representative. Public input is received from a group representative or any individual speaking in favor of the request. This period will be limited to twenty minutes total. Public input is received from a group representative or any individuals speaking in opposition to the request. This period will also be limited to twenty minutes total. Petitioner or petitioner's representative is allowed an opportunity for response or clarification if time remains in the twenty minute period. Public input session will then be closed. The, the Planning Commission will discuss the request and may ask questions of planning department staff and/or the petitioner. Upon a motion and a second, and after any discussion of the motion, the Planning Commission will vote on the motion. The commission may elect to approve, modify, place conditions on, table, or deny a motion. We ask that you observe the following items regarding public input. Upon approaching the podium, please state your name and home address. Please direct your comments to the Planning Commission and not to the audience. When there are multiple speakers, please avoid repeating statements made by previous speakers so that there is time to hear from everyone. We ask the audience to extend the courtesy of not applauding or commenting on any of the speakers. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the April eighteenth meeting. Commissioners, you have in front of you minutes, please take a moment to review and make any comments, suggestions, or corrections. I have one. Yeah. At the top of page two, for item number one on the agenda, it says voting in favor and it identifies the people voting in favor, and then it says voting in opposition all. So that should probably be none, shouldn't it? Okay. Sorry, didn't mean, didn't mean to jump your comments, Steve. Any other corrections or comments? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion from Nathan and a second from Steve. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you very much. First item of new business on the agenda is rezone P twenty-two dash oh sixty-four at Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, you have before you this evening, P twenty-two zero zero six four, and that Nelson owner, this is located just off of Flat Rock Road, portion of D zero two zero four one A. It's currently zoned AG in the rural places character area. And the request is a reason approximately two point zero two acres of the existing AG parcel to AR for single family residents. This is the concept plan that you have in your packets. And these are the architectural images, representative photos of the proposed structure, and staff recommends approval with the three standard conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Guy. At this time, we'll hear from the petitioner or the petitioner's representative.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission Board. Good to see you all. My name is Abe Abou Hamdan. I'm the principal of ABE Consulting here in town. My home address is sixteen oh one Robin Hood Road, Watkinsville. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the board, to present this request before you. If we can go back to the plan and just wanted to mention that the lot started out about seven and a half acres or so, and what we're trying to do is cut that two acre in the back. Is here with me, and that Nelson's the owner. She's been staying and living in that home for over sixteen years. Loves the area, is rural. We also have one of the neighbors here kindly enough to be here as well, is on the left side and above. And so because of situation related to marriage issue like that, we're have, we're having to sell the home and she really wants to stay on the property. She wanted to be where she's been the last sixteen plus years. The neighbors loves her, she loves the neighbors. We're not trying to do a major subdivision here. I know we're just on the edge of that character in the future land use map, and we're, we're putting a decent lot, we're not trying to put a bunch of density out here. So the home is a, a traditional, really farm home looking, you've, you've got the architectural rendering in there and representation. And so hopefully she, we can move forward with a positive response and vote from this body to, to the Board of Commissioners. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions we've gone through and made sure everything is met in terms of size and lot ease setbacks as far as the septic. We have done the level three soil survey, completed all the studies, even drawn a plan. So we've gone through an extensive studies to make sure what we presented to you is gonna work and work well. And this is the location of that house. If you see, it looks over a great pasture on the right, which is under a conservation. So we're not, like I said, trying to add too much to the density or making a big subdivision here. We're so close to lots of other AR zone or even R one, the property AR one. I know we have a couple of subdivisions just down the road that's still part from this, this lot. I'll be more than happy, Mr. Chairman, to answer any questions you may have or the board may have for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return the request to the commission. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for staff or the petition? In this see if you, she's looking to build a
On AG is a thousand, AR, if it's a residence subdivision, I think it's about eighteen hundred, so there's, there's not an issue with the size of the house.
All right, that's Guy, I have one just for clarification. Oftentimes when we see this type of request, we see a flag lot with the driveway on the back lot extending to the street. I wonder about that, but I also see that the primary lot tract one A is five point one eight acres. If the, if the property were to extend to the street, would that create an AG zoning problem for the primary lot being less than five acres?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve case P twenty-two dash zero zero six four. Staff recommendations. Motion to approve from Scott, a second.
Second from Mike, just in case. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Is you there? Next item on the agenda is preliminary site plan P twenty-two dash zero zero seven three, Allison Creek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is the preliminary site plan for Allison Creek LLC. The town of Bishop requires that the, any preliminary flats come before the Planning Commission, before it goes to the, for recommendation, before it goes to the city council. And so that is what is before you this evening. You have this site plan in your packet, the staff has reviewed it for compliance with the town of Bishop's ordinances, and we find it's now in compliance. And so we're asking for your recommendation so that we can send it on to the city council for the final approval.
Thank you, Guy. At this time, we'll hear from the petitioner or the petitioner's representative.
Mr. Chairman, once more, Abe Abou Hamdan, you have my address on records, sixteen oh one Robin Hood Road, Watkinsville. Again, this is a process that's really not require in a public meeting, it does require Planning Commission approval. And the city of Bishop has fairly strict steps that you gotta go through, and this has been a lengthy process, to say the least. They, you know, we're into the six, seven months right now going through this process. We went through a various previously for the buffers because existing trees and other reasons, and so they require really the departments, if I'm correct, this race, to be approving what we submit as a flat prior to come in before you. So it comes ready with all the department approvals, so before it can move forward to the city of Bishop, mayor and council. But as you could see, everything has been met, otherwise it can't be brought to you. So I'll be glad to answer any questions, everything is in order. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this request? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I had one question of the thousand gallon tank to be abandoned. What was it that? That gasoline, diesel fuel or?
No, sir, it was grease trap.
Okay. I saw the grease trap over there on the side, so I wasn't sure. Yes.
Any other questions from the commission? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve this. Put together by a plan of all.
Motion to approve by Gavin, a second. Second from Scott, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your right hand. That carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is our continuing Planning Commission training.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Yeah, this is
This series is gonna be on the finding of facts, so we'll have very riveting video from a, an attorney. So we'll turn the lights down so you can see it with custody.
I live for these things. I gotta tell you.
Hello and welcome to Planning Commissioner training. I'm David Sullivan, I'm a partner at Ansel like in Chicago. Prior life before we did the journey, I was practicing letter. I'm gonna be going over various legal issues that you as planning issue need to consider yourselves with. And whether you're seasoned or whether you're good for life mission, we hope that you find this material helpful as you proceed with serving your communities in the very important of being a commission. So it's important to understand that law is shaped by state laws as maybe defined better through court cases. And how those legal principles, which are regulations, statutory law, and again, case law shape your role in how you operate as a planning mission. The first thing we're gonna talk about is finding fact, making fact important, is to make the fact that we represent a number of communities, and I can tell you in our own experience, it varies, but one thing we try to emphasize the importance of making a good findings of fact for what you believe. But one thing we try to emphasize the importance of making a good findings of fact for what you believe from public hearing processes, also tailored by ethics. So with any forms of legal thing. There is a set of standards that an applicant needs to demonstrate. Get word from a planning commission to make a recommendation to the corporate authorities, your area, your building board, your area, your city council, whatever it is. That's your role. Your role is to delegate an authority from this, the municipal legislature to full public hearings. And make findings of fact so that you can make an informed recommendation. And finding of fact and standards, these, these terms kind of get bandied about kind of carelessly frankly. And I built the other two, but really ultimately a decision based on a set of standards that are elected here somewhere. So the purpose of the finding of fact is not only to frankly constrain your operation as a planning commissioner. Because your jurisdiction is the, your jurisdiction is specifically provided for a legal code and sometimes again by state statutes. But they are designed to elicit information on banners of import, retaining the title of the applicant before you receive it, especially his permit. Sometimes also those conditionally permanent, a map of it, so zoning, maybe test of it. In the rare cases, variations that are those follow your jurisdiction review. But they balance the rights of property owners, again, they need to get that. And again, they constrain your jurisdictional authority so that your recommendations don't roll up to the legislative body in a arbitrary suspicious manner. So they don't bring the discussion you're gonna gather the public hearing between you and the applicant and members of the public who choose to come in and provide your own testimony. They're also designed to ensure your process and a predictable, not a guaranteed result, but a predictable decision-making process. They also should align with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. And you as a planning commissioner have a you have an expectation, a very reasonable expectation that any of the community authorities, whatever it be, is gonna be prepared to show that the standards for what they are seeking are met by the evidence they're prepared to present. The evidence that they may be asked to present in response to concern you publicly. And any questions you as a planning commissioner may have about your application. It's very good when you hold a public hearing in your deliberation phase, trying to determine the regulation you're also gonna make to the legislative body, municipality. To refer to those standards. Again, they are equally to frame the entire conversation and ultimately for what other recommendation. It's also essential if to have good findings of fact that meet the standards of your code as well as state law. In the event that a decision is ultimately gonna be litigated between the municipality and property owner, perhaps even objectors to the legal grant. So some common examples of standards for finding of fact are how well in terms of development in the area, the name of the rest of the territory, consistency, consistency with the current plan. That it will not adversely affect the public health, safety and welfare. That there are adequate health utilities to serve the proposed development. And that it won't have a negative impact on neighborhood problems. And certainly one of the bigger available points when you, of course, you're sitting in a public hearing and neighborhood property owners are coming to you, telling you that it's going to cause traffic issues, it's gonna frustrate structural management issues, all the rest. It adds an important point because when you're sitting in a public hearing and you're listening to the public with their concerns and they are valid concerns, a lot of times you're not dealing with experts. It's the rare occasion that you actually get a neighborhood disturbance expert. So you have to, you, you have to take those concerns into consideration. You have to make sure that the applicant is aware of those types of concerns. But you also have to weigh your hat, was it opinion, testimony, what is good, factually based testimony, based on the expertise. There may be the occasion that objectors come with your own experts who are there to refute the testimony being offered by an applicant. And then that can create a very interesting conversation that could influence the definition of what this is, things like that. So in that regard, it's very good to have a vantage process with a rule of procedure behind your provision of rights. So let's have a few minutes about ethics. You are government officials, you are appointed to your position by your municipality to conduct public hearings and serve as gatekeepers to ensure that the applicants' plans be protected. The active goals and objectives of the governance plan are being advanced by different zoning applications that come before you. That can put a planning commissioner in an interesting position now when you have visitor for neighbors, but also applicants themselves to be an applicant in the community. And you have to make sure that everything that you do as a planning commissioner is done in the context of the public hearing. But we're gonna do this a little bit more, of course, when we talk about things like expertise communication, there's humanists, plus the places to say, there's laws in your states that you are subject to, that ensure that you're you as a governmental official, if you need to think of yourself that way, is operating at the highest level of standards. And that your actions are not somehow compromised by the actions of neighbors, the actions of applicants or whatever. You sit in somewhat, if you think about it, you sit in somewhat of a visual role because you're being backed and you're facing tongue with rules, you're making recommendations. In most cases, you recommend anybody and then the legislature has vital decision-making authority. Certainly not true with, it's a very true state to state, but that's something, but nonetheless, as an important part of the approval process for what people can and can't do with their property. You need to make sure that you operate at all terms, break the highest level of standards. And again, there are state laws across the country that govern that, that you are likely subject to. If you have questions about it, you should definitely talk to your local attorney. But it's all set forth to make sure that there's competence of government, there's competence of the process. And without these institutional controls in place, you can see where it needs to break down. And trusted government's a major issue right now nationally. And it's very important to keep your mind focused on these issues. And again, any questions can first be directed to staff and a real retreat depending on how the notification flows through your government structure.
So we also provided the handouts to you of the slides, but we also have provided a couple of questions that I'll go over briefly. And then we can discuss as you, as you see fit. So number one, what are the findings of fact? That is what the Mr. Silverman went over just a minute ago. And of course, findings of fact are the specific justifications the planning commission uses to make a recommendation based on important information gleaned during the hearing. Findings of fact are important because they want to frame the conversation, frame the discussion of the hearing, balance the property rights with community needs, constrain the actions of the planning commission to within its jurisdictional purview and ensure a fair and predictable decision-making process. So the decisions are not arbitrary or capricious. Number two, what is the standard of review? Criteria that are used to make recommendations about cases. These are in your staff reports that you get each, each month from us. That's the, the, the numbers and letters that you have in the staff analysis section. That is our standards for criteria, standards for review, and that can be found in the unified development code. And these are examples such as compatibility with the comp plan, the existing development trends, the effects on public safety, welfare, et cetera. And then number three, the factors should be considered during your determining how you might vote during the planning commission. And those are of course standards of review. And number four, how should staff's recommendations be considered when voting? Staff recommendations are a result of the extensive review of the submitted materials for the compliance with UDC and the comp plan. Detailed research on the history of the property and the analysis of the merits of the request using the standards of review that we just discussed. Staff recommendations should be considered as one of the key factors influencing your, or guiding your vote. In addition to your own analysis of the merits of the case, using the standards of review, public input received throughout the process and then ethical considerations. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions or if you have any points that you'd like to discuss.
In COVID age.
The picture's not the same.
Yeah, on that last point. We got a lot of new members here and I just, there are times when the staff either recommends something or recommends approval or recommends denial. Even if we've gone with the staff's recommendations, B O C ends up doing it different and vice versa. Sometimes we see an issue with the staffs or we see additional things in point that we go against staff. And then the B O C either reverts back to staff or goes along with us. So it is not a struggle between their study and their write-up. And so we are supposed to bring like a fresh pair of eyes to it, even though they've, this staff, I, I could say that I've worked with a different set of staff members where they oftentimes, you could see their bias in their staff report and that's not appropriate either. And so these guys have, I would have to attest to the fact they've been doing it by the book. As far as I can tell. So that, that particular point, I just wanted to say we don't have to go along with staff, but then again, we have to think seriously as to what, why we might see it different than staff and be able to support our argument or ask questions that, you know, get clarity. So, all right.
Something, something that is, is different in our part of the process than staff's is the staff makes a decision largely devoid of public input. Whereas we wind up making a decision factoring in public input.
Yeah, we're supposed to be aware of our neighbors. So for instance, the bishop thing that we just saw, I knew all the neighbors of that particular project and I didn't feel it necessary because the discussion was already there. But they, that applicant has been very good in communicating with all his neighbors. And if that was necessary, I was gonna share that to, you know, finish the argument. But that's what we're supposed to be a little bit more aware of, what our neighbors think of it and what are, you know, do we take that into consideration?
That's it.
We can't be prejudiced.
The, the plural of anecdote is not data. So if you have five neighbors who are all opposed to something, they may have a very strong emotional feeling about it. But if there's nothing in a matter of fact that can support that, other than the fact that they're unhappy that their adjoining property is changing. You, you know, we have to be careful about understanding that public input is important and relevant. But unless it's grounded in a factual basis that is, that, that impacts the, the comp plan and the UDC. Then, then we have to be very careful about a room full of people swinging a decision.
Well, that's like, property owners' rights to use their property is appropriately as opposed to everybody's opinion as to how they should be.
Here, you know, for homeowners, it's, you know, it's gonna impact. Study values in the county pretty closely. I'm not familiar with any traffic. Especially because of the zone or in, or because of the zone, even after the fact. So I, I don't, I don't know if we have details on that guy or, or maybe Mr. Skinner does. But it would be very interesting for someone to do a study and present that property values versus perceived that.
And that may be challenging in this county in particular because of the way that zoning is handled here. Where basically the entire county is zoned at the lowest taxable value and then is zoned up as situations dictate. So the, the odds on finding a, a property that is meaningfully corn, as long as the majority of property in the county is still zoned A G, is gonna be a little trickier than if it was already zoned at a higher level.
But I think you could make the line go from the tracks that way.
But an example of where there is a, this number, when the valuation of my property is gonna decline is the cell tower applications. Because we have heard that there's a growing market and properties are selling like hotcakes and they're going for more than they're asked. But there's a bunch of rural property that has signs up that have been there for years, almost a year, because they don't have internet, they don't have wifi, they don't have. Meanwhile, Marshall Road, you have houses that sell in two days' time. So that, that fallacy of my property values are going down because of the tower or there's a, you know, a new roundabout or other things like that. That is where the public is not as informed or at least aware of the big picture as we're supposed to try to keep ourselves. So that is, you know, there are valuation questions that aren't on everybody's mind. So that's one of the things that we need to sort of.
And we don't necessarily have access to that information.
We're not the experts.
You, you guys don't necessarily have a great deal of access to that and it doesn't factor heavily into your decisions.
That's correct.
No, I'm just saying that it does when the, when the public comes in, you know, they wanna talk about, you know, the traffic. Number one, they won't talk about that. Two, they won't talk about that.
Well, I agree with you completely.
Yes, yes.
So I think the problem is there's not a lot of knowledge out there.
I know, I'm sorry, we tried to gain some. This body had some facts, we'd operate them. How many, if that requires getting with Mr. Skinner. And you know, when I was on the industrial authority, you know, we, we had Mr. Skinner in for several days. Got a real education about how our values, about how he applies values to tracts of land, irregardless of zone. Zone has no impact on value in this county.
So, so do you think, Guy, it would be possible to, to say bring Mr. Skinner in and give us a little education in that area?
Yeah, let me, let me check on that, let me work on that. We can add that.
Sounds like a good idea.
To one of our meetings.
I mean, what he told us in the industrial authorities.
Was good.
We thought that, hey, if you had a piece of land zoned I, that it's worth more money than a piece of land zoned A. Mr. Skinner said, no, that's not the case. Said it's according to what's trading around your area is how we bag with whatever. But, but he really didn't really give us, uh, didn't give us enough weight.
Then, as I, because I can prove that ad, when you put a bunch of stuff on it, you pay a lot of taxes. On the joint committee that did the thirty year thing, we did get predictive analysis, at least the growth factors. So, you know, the edge over towards Barrow and all that was gonna grow this much and Bishop and Farmington were expected to grow this much. So we did get that sort of input that it's in, it's sort of built into the comprehensive plan. Because it was part of our education or part of our discussion at that point. So I don't know if every zoning applicant has to have that, but the thirty year plan is supposed to sort of. has to have that, but the, the thirty year plan is supposed to sort of massage that in.
So in, in that case, we will have that new data. So we've got the, the census data that's now available, right? Will be into our five-year update. We'll put into our five-year update. So through this next year, we will have that analysis of the new demographics and the new um, the growth analysis, the TASs and those type of transportation zones. So we will have all of that um for review at some point over this next period with, over this next year with our comp plan update. So that is, that is a plus. And you're right, that is included in the comp plan as well.
Guy, for a developer that wants to build a large commercial flats that might affect a, a subregion or a lot of neighborhoods. Is there a requirement or do you guys ask the question in the, in the paperwork process? Have you spoken to the neighbors? Or, or is it?
No, not in the application. No, no.
So I, I think that when the room is full of people, that would say to me that maybe there wasn't a lot of communication. And that the only time that they're, that they're taking their opportunity that we, that's provided to have that communication.
But we've also seen if the developer has made a very good attempt, because they gave advance notice, the opposition or the proponents had time to build up steam too. So that brings a big crowd in here as well. So it's not just the lack of communication that brings a big crowd. It's sometimes, you know.
Yeah.
Not the right. Yeah.
Yeah. So that's, that's part of our job, is to provide that public hearing.
Right. And then if we did have some facts that we could show we have people hollering or say it and, and not educated about what property values do actually. Because we got, Mr. Skinner types those. We all know, we play Mr. Skinner in events.
Right.
And he knows the numbers. He's got.
The, the one thing that we haven't seen in a long while is there is such a thing as table now or sending it back for more information. If there is this disparity of one side's presenting one set of facts, one side presenting another set of facts and we don't know, you know, what the unbiased parties give us on the same. It has happened that we've tabled things and put it back, but if you do that too arbitrarily, you are putting a financial burden on the property also. So you gotta, you know, decide is that violating his rights of application, if he's done the due diligence and the process, we can't arbitrarily table it. Like when important issues arise, it can be.
Well, uh, yeah, I think that was the case in the past. Uh, but now we, there's been text amendments that have occurred and they've passed the tabling. The planning commission is not an option, right? So you send that on. But you certainly can raise those questions, you know, and then by your vote and by your recommendation, you can also make a, a point to the, to the board commissioners as to, you know, how you feel.
So, so let's, let's touch on that for a minute. So are you telling me or telling us that the text amendments to the UDC now prevent the planning commission from?
From tabling, right. Yes.
Yeah, it came along.
Yeah.
Cause I asked.
Right.
Well, we had the church from Athens.
Yeah.
Out here. Um, and they had not been able to contact the suburb.
Some of the group ones.
Yes. Yep. And I asked.
Well, back in the big subdivision days, I think you were on. Had to happen upstairs. We had two hundred feet forward, we had two hundred fifty against.
And uniforms.
Yeah, yeah.
Uniforms were one color.
Yes. Very contentious. You could say both sides of it. But the package was to be back then. Hey, our UDC wasn't very big.
Yeah.
Our package was, I mean, I used to look at the packages, the pages were giant. And I'm like, how in the world are infos going to vote on that? And it's that big. You know, and all these people out here saying, no, 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 no. And the applicant saying, yes. And staff says, yes. But then you got two hundred fifty over here at some point at the lectern. You know, so if you luckily think our rules have evolved where we're not putting ourselves in that situation anymore. We got some rules that now we can go by.
That's correct.
Yeah. Which is a great thing.
And the staff was taking chill pills before they come in because we used to get the staff applicants and then vice versa.
Really?
That didn't go well with the crowds.
With the, with the new text amendment, what, what is the trigger for like corporate, you know, cooperation? Neighbors of, of file, of somebody filing an application for a rezone or it, you know, being, I've been on all three of the sides, just go for previous planning commission in Clark County and and developed and, you know, so forth. You know, I had an issue in Clark County. One time I had a project held up for three years. And it was multi-million dollar project that, uh, you know, three neighborhoods ended up filing accident. And in the long run, we, you know, we kind of weighed them out and it fell, it fell off and we, we moved on. It got to financially burdensome for them to pay the legal bills. So, you know, but, but it was a, it was a rough, rough go there. And I, you know, I went out. Went out and put flyers out all around the neighborhoods, called for meetings and tried to get people involved so that I could, you know, discuss the project, uh, you know, what we were going to do about buffers. Although the requirements for buffers at the time, it was a changing environment back then. And, you know, as you know, in the late eighties, early nineties, everything was, was, you know, ball, it was really just new, all the new uh, urbanism concepts and so forth. But in my situation, if you didn't, as a developer, didn't get, get out there to do that, the, the, the trigger for doing anything like that is once you get to this point and everybody's riled up, the neighborhood, the point, then fussing and you know, vice versa. What, a, and we have, we, what you're saying is we don't have the ability, how I've seen it previously, is to you know, wait to say, you know, we, we would like the, the, the property owners and the person who filed that petition to, to meet in the next thirty days. And we would like, we'd like to, you know, hold this meeting in, in this decision prediction. And you're saying with the new text amendment, we cannot be there.
Right. That, then that was some time ago when we did that. Yes.
The commission can't, the applicant can still pull their application. That applicant can still pull it off the table if they do it entirely. But we aren't supposed to.
Okay.
Oh, absolutely. The, the, the board of commissioners can table and they have in recent past to offer the applicant, the developer, whoever, whomever, you know, opportunity to reach out to the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, outside of that, you know. Mail letters, all kinds of things. I'd have, you thought I had to spin.
Well, I, you know, I think a lot of.
I'm not saying it happens every time like that. So, yeah. In my case, it did happen.
And I, in my case, I think the, 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 the folks, you know, are in such fear of the big bad developer, you know, you know, and oh, unless they have an attorney, they think they have an attorney and all that kind of stuff. They just, a lot of times they won't, they just won't reach back out to you, won't call you.
No, they won't call you or, or have a conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah. And when they get up here, they have a bunch of opinions that could have been settled out, you know, especially on buffer stuff. That's why I was reaching out to. I was. Right. I, I buff myself from myself. You know. But, but my favorite, but anyway, I, I should have buffered myself from the subdivision, but yeah, I couldn't do that. I buffered myself from myself.
So along with such a skin, Mr. Skinner visiting and thus reading the website and information, was the best resource for new members to self-educate? All the files and tables between. As far as all the.
Well, certainly our UDC is online as well, right? But, you know, I think the best resource is going to be staff, right? We welcome your calls and your interaction with us anytime, as much as you want, you know, so we can certainly set time aside to even meet with you, to go over cases with you. We're, we're, we're here for that, right? As a resource to you. So we put together the application packet. We send that to you. That has all the information uh that we've garnered from the UDC and from the criteria analysis. But certainly if you have questions about any of that, we'll be glad to help. We'll be glad to just sit and, and discuss that with you.
Yeah, I had an opinion, small handbook. Years ago, I did an internship with Fairfield.
Yeah. Right.
And that was pretty interesting process.
Yeah.
So I was involved a little bit, but yeah, put together documents, basically.
Right. For, for the public. Yes. Right. Yeah.
Guy, I've still got the handbook or the educational tool that was given to us when the planning commissions in the northeast Georgia area went to the class that Carl Vincent put on.
Yes, that's right. Yeah.
I'm happy to make that available to you guys.
Okay. Yeah.
As long as, as long as we're not infringing on anybody's.
Yeah, no, I think that's fine. Yeah. And certainly we can, absolutely. We, we can put that together for you and send that to each of you.
That we get the benefits of it without having to wade into that quite the starter pack.
Now, the, the idea of the big subdivision's coming toward us has all of a sudden gone back down again as far as interest. But one thing that we haven't done in a long time is an inventory of buildable lots that we've already permitted. Because one of the things about our decisions in here, if they had a time limit, there would be some less angst amongst the crowd because sometimes if we, you know, approve a thousand home subdivision, it might get through now, but it may not be the right thing in the future or vice versa. Um, so what is the the current buildable lots that are already planted? Do you have any ideas?
Yeah. So we do. We provide the board of education twice a year, an analysis on that. Uh, and I certainly can send that out to you, I believe. Believe the chairman shared some of that, maybe uh, one of his uh town halls or something. But I'll, I'll be glad to send that out too. Yeah, we do. Uh, so we have a, an analysis that shows based on all the school zones, right? The number of zoned lots, the number of developed lots, number of planted lots. And so it varies. We, what was that? That's correct. So we have right around three thousand lots there's.
That's what I said.
That are zoned that have not been uh developed or built on.
Prior to the building boom upswings, we've been building at like three hundred a, a year. So we had like ten years' worth of inventory before the next subdivision. So that, those type of things are important to keep, you know, close to your edges of your head. If we get those big subdivisions, because if we keep doing them two and three at a time, we're still going to stay ahead of the average build before we need another subdivision. And we've got the one on Marshall that's getting the roads built now. And we've got a couple others that are about to get built up. But some of these were permitted twenty years ago.
And some of them are laid in there. Oh, well, I say never.
We pull in permits at about two fifty, two hundred to two fifty a year.
We are, we're right around two hundred. Uh, I think we did one a I think it was right around two hundred this past.
So we, we've got fifteen near supply of plan, uh, buildable lots.
Yeah, and you're right. We were, we were four fifties, you know, during the, the boom, right? And then we've seen that decline over the next last four, five years.
For this year.
It depends on who comes online and it depends on supply. You know, it's not just anything we do, right? I mean, it's just the nature of supply right now.
Yeah.
So for Michael, Michael Burris, words, there's no expiration date, such as when the economy fell on seven L A.
No. That, that's right. Yeah. So, so once it's zoned, it's difficult to unzone, right? Because you've come to a decision.
And we did some that wanted to go back to.
And based on criteria that, you know, Mr. Silverman spoke about, you've made a decision based on the standard of criteria. It's very difficult to take that away from somebody.
There, there's no expiration date, but because of County County does site plan approval as part of zoning approval. If the developer wants to change the site plan in any meaningful way, they have to come back through the process. So, so while there's no expiration, it is basically just as approved. And there really isn't any wiggle room without the whole thing having to come back.
So if they had nineteen fifty's homes, then those aren't to code these days. That would affect.
Or there's some that are in different states, like what's up there at Dooly. It's, it's that. Well, it's like the one down on Green Ferry, you know, that you probably don't even know that's there. It's cutting that to the left. Ah, they don't even have PVC in there. I mean, they had nothing. So it'll take, you know, thirty-six months.
Sewer just got to be our, that's the.
Yeah.
Well, and then.
Those were, they're designed.
You know, that rezone is almost six hundred houses, right?
The, uh, the duly, yeah, that's right. That's seven hundred homes.
So, so if, if they build every house built in this county for the next four years, if it's still taking four years to, to build out that building, more realistically, it's probably going to take them, what, eight to ten?
I'd say ten or, ten or fifteen, that'd be my guess. But yes, you're right.
They had some density that would require sewage and that was, that become the issue. If, if they change density and they get four hundred fifty out of that, they could do all septic systems.
Right. Yeah. The, they're, they're, they have an allocation. Parkside and Weston both have a, a court ordered allocation. So they have to.
They won that down. Cause for a while they were trying to get that.
Yeah. Change you here.
Alright. Enough to think about this.
Guy, you're getting your money's worth out of these things.
Excellent. I love it.
Conversation.
And I do appreciate that and I think.
Willingness to engage.
Yes.
Oh, God, thank you, getting late. I was afraid the thing was going to be over.
The way Brad looks at that clock, it could have.
Try not to. Second from Matt, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks.